Everyone can stand with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the body of the United States of America and to the great republic which stands one nation under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all. All right, do you want to give us a call?
Sure. So, my name is Gina, we are the L G N representatives of the South. And I have a good question because I have a friendship meeting with you budget request channel. So I need whether again it's more afternoon and go over and analyze our revenues. So at this point tonight, I kind of want to go through department head requests, see most things I'm trying to incorporate to the budget. There's some items on some that I kind of need some guidance. And we might have to revisit this again after we get revenues tomorrow so we can make some adjustments. So the first one, I had invited Brooklyn Shire, but I would sit there if you're here yet. They had a request out of those people to skip them or the top letter. I mean, I can read it in mid-morning.
They provided counsel several weeks ago.
They read the packets. Then they said they wanted to speak and everybody knows.
We can let's see if they come in late.
Sure. So the fire department, the really only request I had from Shire was a ladder truck proposal. He informed me that just getting 100,000 from the town, I believe he sent 50,000 from the township, and then for the down payment for the town, put back the vision of 100,000. The total cost of the ladder is 845,000 and 135 dollars. It looks like this year that down payment of 220,000 would be too. Then the first payment date, January 22, 3, is 50,000. The second payment date, 24, 4, is additional 100,000. And then there's payment options at the bottom, over eight years, nine years, 10 years, 12 years. The lease rate is underneath that, but payment amounts are there. So if we did eight years, each payment, annual payment would be 66,631.06 cents at a lease rate of 4.0%.
What's CCD fund got right now?
116,000.
Annual lead what to typically bring in?
It's decreased over the last couple of years, usually around 50,000. That's with the tax rate plus the firemen hours that it was possible.
Right. So the 12-year option would fall, we would just be committing payments for that out of CCD for the next 12 years?
Pretty much unless you want to combine it with some public safety.
And then when Mark mentioned it to me, he mentioned that the fire, their nonprofit would have some to chip in on this first round to help offset some of that cost.
I guess the part that is the initial.
Do we for sure have the commitment from the county?
I didn't listen, he told me he did, so. That's unofficial. That's unofficial yet.
I think it was.
Essentially, I think this is something that could be addressed down there if we want to wait until they know for sure. I have not included this in the budget as of yet because I didn't know even how everybody felt about it.
And some of this would come out of this year's budget, right?
I'm sorry?
The down payment would be this year, right?
Yeah, I would just have to do an additional appropriation to spend that, which is pretty simple to sabotage and have it go like here.
One thing someone mentioned to me, if we do go with this route, I don't know if we're getting the updated fire rating because we have the ladder truck now. So if we did this, we would make sure that they fill out the paperwork to get the fire rating dropped down.
Is that for insurance, you mean insurance purposes?
Insurance. Mm-hmm. And then we would have to trade it, well, there's no trading value, but I believe another department is interested in purchasing the existing ladder truck.
He didn't mention that to me, but he did say this was going to probably be a two-year process.
Yeah.
Because they have to build it, put together.
Yeah, I don't think it'd be any service until 2024.
So it still has two more years, yeah.
Yeah. And they thought that they could get about 60,000 out of the resale of the existing ladder truck.
How old was the old ladder truck?
It's old.
Old?
Yeah, I don't know date, or a year, but it was old when we got it. We've had it for five years.
Four or five years?
Yeah.
That was our goal.
Yeah, we bought it used.
You just ready to take on tour or is there a running pre-rush this way?
I think once we get a for sure commitment from the county that would tell us if we're doing 250 this year or 150, if we would decide to do it.
Right.
I mean, I think it's worthwhile to have it in the fleet.
Sure.
And it'd be nice to have
Yeah.
A new one without problems. I mean, that one was out of service for a little bit earlier last year.
Yeah. I think with the size of our buildings, we need a ladder truck.
So I would just plan on not putting this in this time, and there's my jet until we know some definitive answers.
Okay.
I kind of wish it was conditional, just have it clear.
So we don't have anything earmarked out of CCD for next year, right?
We generally have a small amount to be done every year, just for repairs or anything, that equipment that is necessary. So essentially, if we could, how much everyone wanted to appropriate out of that, go ahead and put that in the budget. Because maybe we have to spend it.
Historically, we've used CCD for the fire department.
Only the fire department.
Right. And when we bought the two trucks before the tanker, it had accumulated quite a bit more than what it is now. And the next reason it's so low is that the tanker and the other additional trucks purchased out of that.
I think at that time, too, with the purchase of the two, it was, we did quite, we committed quite a bit out of general as well, with safety.
Paid that in, is it three years?
Very, sorry.
Yeah.
So if we did wait, how long are we talking about waiting until the county?
Just until maybe we get put, like, or said I could go in and propose it and have Q cap developed. Doesn't mean we have to spend it.
And it would stay at the same interest rate?
The Q cap rate is the same regardless. That doesn't change.
But I mean, the prices for this could...
Oh, that I have, yeah. I'm sure.
I think I would like to include it in the budget for next year, and then we can always, if we decide that's not the route we want to go, we can change that. But I think I have a budget for it.
So do you want me to do 100,000 out of Q cap, or would you rather we do a portion of that and a portion of public safety?
I'd probably say portion of each.
Of each, yeah.
Are you going to do like 80, 20, 20, 30?
What do you have in Q cap, 50,000?
16,000. I just don't want to do plenty.
I'd do like 75, 25.
Okay.
And then no other from the fire department this year?
No, other than that, I don't know.
Other than their typical budget?
Yes, sorry. Their typical line item is to supply the supply by council.
Okay.
We did increase that, I believe that was last year.
Right.
I did increase a little bit further, find more compensation, just in case you and the council decides to do salary increases of any sort.
Okay.
The next one I have is the water works request. Water tank is a primary, we're paying 10 F to get the quote to be 75,000, 100,000. Utility requests, I don't have to budget because of the tax rate. So I'm not too quick to don't own these types of things because I like to see what happens with our funds. So the water, we have parking projects, we still need to do, that's a skate system, a little head frame, and I think the top brining of the building. Is it top brining? I can't remember what that was now.
Yeah.
I think so.
So I discussed it, I kind of spoke with Tim, I'm of the impression, I'll see Miranda at the end of the year, maybe the year that she'll be ready for justice issue. We didn't have a lesson, but I am not, I just want to kind of pull on the last that we did.
I think that makes sense to what we did last year when we had the skater request.
Yeah. Normally, we don't have that big expenditures for utilities, two years around. The next one is the water, budget considerations. Looks like there's several. The first one is a different control panel installation. I think they did a quote from one of us. Again, this is kind of a large item, almost right under 63,000, quote for move, to move those control panels out of the pit, he says. Reason being conditions for red condensation going on the control boxes. So for some current control panels, problem is always in the panel inside the pit. So they can remove them up top, so I don't worry about condensation.
It's a better idea.
Which I understand.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Again, I have the same impression, we're spending a lot of waste water currently for other items, with the crushes.
Right.
There is, so.
It's always a difference.
These clarifier needs to be overwhelmed, just like the west clarifier was, but that waste water system improvement project, that made up that grant through OPR. So we were lucky enough to get the west clarifier completed through that project, but obviously that east clarifier will need to be done at some point. That's a large, that's a lot to handle. And then it looks like he's requesting a raise for Dwight. Dwight has been an employee in the town for 30 years, has certification about water and waste water. He's very knowledgeable about the waste water plant, history, and how to maintain specific levels of treatment, which can only be learned by experience. I've been at the waste water plant for eight months, and recent events have shown that I only came starting and what I need to know about my own this plant. There are certain vital requirements that may only be performed at certain times of the year, and Dwight knows this and takes care of these needs, which he's completely on their own. No two plants are treated the same way, therefore we need to find a new employee that is willing to learn the knowledge and skills that Dwight has acquired throughout his career. Everyone knows these are areas of the skills that he worked on, but when it comes to knowing how to run the plant, he is invaluable. So I'm kind of looking at that as a raise for Dwight and another employee to learn, to train for Dwight.
Didn't we just hire an employee?
We did. For longer, or what?
Are we going to cross train that person?
We can, but they have to have so many hours doing just water before they can test. And then it's two years and so many hours, and then wastewater is three years and so many hours. So it's kind of hard to cross train them. It would be ideal to have another person.
Where's Andy at with this training?
I'm not sure.
Has he taken that test again?
He has not.
Has he signed up for it?
I'm not sure. Not that I've seen him. I've asked him, but nothing definitive. I mean, he knows the S3 ticket, but nothing beyond that.
We definitely need to get another person licensed down there, for a situation where we're at the fore. And so either Tim or someone will stay on him to get that, that test covered.
With the certification taking so long to obtain for both water and wastewater, you almost have to have somebody that you can start and start, you know, getting them on the path of training for certification.
And if we didn't have Dwight right now?
Yeah.
That's why it's important for Andy to get his license, because he could be a dual operator, too.
Yeah.
And in event, something would happen to Dwight, I mean, nobody knows what goes on, then we're, we're without an operator for both.
Yeah.
What's it, Gina, what's it do to the budget, adding an additional employee? Are we back to where we were with Danny?
Pretty much, yeah.
And there's probably not a chance of getting someone that's licensed already, we tried it before.
I think we didn't have a walk in that.
I haven't.
Yeah.
The Austin has experience, the one that we just had, he worked for the town of San Juan, but no, I haven't had any resumes or applicants to license.
Okay.
Yeah. I think they stay put. I mean, if you have a certification, that's so much in demand that people stay put.
What are, so not just for Dwight for a raise, but across the board, what did you do for employee raises? Did you keep it the same?
Annual was 3%. I didn't know what council's thoughts were. I know we had done some raises mid-year this year for certain departments, so I didn't know how to go against those specifically.
Minimally, I think 3% is as low as it would go. If we have the capacity to do a little more to get our rates competitive, I just hate losing employees, although we've lost a number of employees this year. Pay was one factor, so I don't want that to be a factor for training people or letting them leave later on.
I agree.
I mean, is 3% out of it by the board, or does the board want?
I think we really need to look at it. I mean, that's what we've always done, we've always done 3%, that's my memory.
Just with this year, everything going on.
It just seems like everybody is giving more because the cost of living raises skyrocketed.
So I think we really need to look at it.
Some of those went up to 5%.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was saying 3% is a minimum threshold, because we've always done it, but I, 4 or 5 would be more in line with inflation this year.
And I could put them in there as such, and then see what we come across.
Would you like to do 4 or 5?
Let's do 5, and then see if...
Should mix up with 5%.
I think so. What do you guys think?
I agree.
And then I think we have done away with that certification and salaries, because Dwight is our main operator, which was more than that salary line items for having those certifications. So I don't know if you want to create that one out of again for him.
For Andy?
Maybe Dwight. Dwight's the one that...
So he's the main operator, which is more than the other dual certified?
Dwight was before, yes. But he wasn't a main operator before.
Is Andy the main operator of the water plant?
Correct, but Dwight has...
Certification there.
Yeah. So it's kind of, now it's backwards, basically, I think, in my opinion.
So Andy, Andy and Dwight essentially would be making the same pay rate all of Andy has. I think there should be a different classification. I mean, that would give Andy motivation, too, to get his, his other certificate.
Andy's only been working on that certification, though, has it been a year?
It's been over a year now, hasn't it? He was on about the same time we asked him to do that, February?
February.
It's a minimum of two years, so we've still got at least another year.
Well, he has, he has, they have experience working with the sewer distribution system, which can count towards his, his, he's been with the town longer. And because the water and wastewater do dual duties, they make the class, classify his work on distribution into the...
So what are we thinking then, how many more?
Once he passes the test, he can apply for his certificate. Because he's taken the classes and he just has to pass the test, is that right?
Yes, I believe so.
And then he, he applies, and then we should be able to get another certified operator on.
Okay, so he's eligible now to take the test?
Yes.
Gotcha.
I think they sent him, because I didn't let him, because he has that watch certification hours.
Right.
Otherwise, he wouldn't have been allowed to take the test even.
We had to fill out a special exception for him in order to do that after Ronnie left.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I do think we need to adjust the salary requirements to reflect if you're dual certified, even if you are an operator.
I think in the past, it does, when that, Kurt was still here when that was in effect.
Right.
It went by the wayside. So I think now it probably should be more.
Right.
And then the same thing for the additional request from the treatment facility, put those on?
They're quite large, probably.
Well, we can look at other funding opportunities, if OPR has a grant or anything.
I mean, I think Terry said they have to, you have to show that you're doing things, but we don't have to spend.
And it's nice, too, because there was a grant opportunity that we weren't ready for, because we didn't have any numbers. So if Tim has projects like this with numbers attached, we can turn that over to the ARA, and they can help write the smaller grants for those items.
Do you have a suggestion for that certification right now, or do you want to push that one to the salary or simply?
We can address, we can do the salary, I think.
The next one I have is the street department. So I did go ahead after the last...
Skid room.
Yeah, sorry.
This one says waterworks, but street department?
I'm sorry?
Is this what we're looking at?
Yes.
That's street department.
Okay, gotcha.
So the last meeting, I believe, was you had approved that Brent is spending the money from the San Juan Street Department. I did include that in this, in the budget. I just did let Brent know that he is able to just spend that money. I did go ahead and account for that software separately, and then I think it was that I did. And then I found the rest for the equipment, whatever he chooses. So that is an extra budget. All of his other line items for the street, the salaries, I think I did increase to 3% by, can we just add again? Everything else, pretty much remaining the same, they're normal line items. I don't see any other big purchases from the street department, other than that equipment that he's requesting, the garage left, or the skid room, skid door pickup room. I think the skid door pickup room is almost 11,000, the garage left is a little over 20,000. And then I think that software.
53.
53, 6, yeah. So that would probably take care of the sale of the street money. The leader, I consider that a small tools equipment, which we already have line items in general for small tools, of course, anyway, so I feel like that can take over there. I would generally appropriate 5,000, if you should put that, because that would be quite something.
Do we do the same percentage?
Percentage, yeah.
So, I'm sorry?
Do we typically do the same percentage? I mean, it's always...
Percentage we can pay out of local room street if he chooses to.
So that's minus 24.
And actually, NVH, I have street supplies and materials, so I can put that, you can put that in NVH or local room street, whatever. I don't consider that to be a large amount, but that would have to work out. I can tack it on to local room street if we're out there. So I think right now I have 15,000 appropriate out of local room street for paving, that shares community process grant. So I can hold that up, put 3,000 for that street sign area.
I think so.
And then the other thing he was asking for is the walkway, over 2,000, I think that's several. I think it's broken up, and even one of the residents of Hackers that actually fell was concerned because his motor won't stop. So he is asking to get that paid for concrete, I don't remember, but he's got a pool of 10,850, which I would recommend we edit ones to take care of that.
Yeah.
I think there's other large requests, playground launch, which I can break down at Burke. And if, I consider that a fruit of perks.
Yeah, launch can come out.
I feel like that's one of the large ticket items. It's going to cost, but it's not, you know, unreasonable. I think the last item that he has on his list is the airlock for playground equipment. He got a quote for 50,960. I do, I did not print off the proposal that he had for you, because it was a lot of color and paper that I did and all that, so I could pass that around. I'm sorry, Gina. He was saying the other day, oh, I'm sorry, actually. Oh, that's all right. He didn't send it to me, he's, he's been working with Jeff Grandhand. And I tried to look into the grant, I kind of wanted to get an idea from you of what costs lies, you would think giving this idea as well.
Basically, the grant is not for our size. I think the 100% matching start, the place that started said 5,000. So that's just not, the ones we're running at are more like 20,000 for installation and other costs. That's where the big fee is.
So we have, I think I would take the, I think I'd take the park out for next year because that would fall, we can use our money next year after we start the health program to fund projects like that.
They do have our money appropriated, so it's theirs, but it's...
Right. And then we'll get the match, the 333 from the county and the town's portion, we'll have close to a million out of that fund to spend out of, and then we can put projects, community enhancement projects on there. I think we could still look for grant opportunities, but rather than budget for it out of our regular budget, we could use that for projects like this. And then I don't, I wouldn't mind, you know, looking at other parks that we have and seeing. Part of the health process that we, we work with the community to identify needs, and I'm sure down there, that's going to be one of the ones that those residents in that area would identify as a need, because it's been, has enough answers, it's going to install.
Some old equipment down there.
I mean, we could look at, we can look at partnering with the Community Foundation, too, on that project, and then saying that, you know, we'll provide X amount of dollars from our money as a match, and see if they can do one of their, their campaigns to help out with that, just to, to be able to stretch that million dollars even further. So I would take it out of this year's budget, knowing that we have that next year, and we can...
Didn't vote in.
Okay, okay, sweet. You could potentially do the same thing with the launch as well, but if you moved it over to edit and pay for it out of that, we also have the...
Oh, we could wait this month. I'll write it down, see if he's willing to just pull on because it will, if we are pulling down.
Yeah. I mean, another thing, too, is that paving the park lot down Soffel Field, that's been a request that I've had every year since I've been on the board, is that it's not really feasible for people in walkers or wheelchairs to get there. So we can look at using some of the money for that, partnering with the redevelopment commission, funding projects like that.
I think that was all of his. The next one I have...
Did he mention anything about the skids here? I know him and Brett have talked about it.
I think he did, but he didn't say anything about skids here.
It's not a skid, it's not a skid.
That's an attachment. No, the skids here is probably like 65.
I have some chance of sure. I thought that he did, but I haven't seen anything for that.
You may mention it to him before we finalize the budget, because I know Brent is a sort of thing, doesn't ask for everything that he needs.
So skids here?
Yeah.
A couple meetings ago, Brent was here, correct?
I think so.
And I think he brought it up during that meeting. I remember hearing something about a skid here recently.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't mean...
And it might have been when he was here for me.
I don't know if they're not, so he was here also.
I know he's probably thinking that he asks for a lot of other stuff, but with the sale of the building, it really did, because of the additional revenue. So essentially, he just covered the cost of the grant, plus a few parks and signage that we're putting into other buckets of money. So if he needs something in addition, I mean, now would be the time to ask. So if he needs something in addition, I mean, now would be the time to ask. So if they really do need that, because I know it caused some market issues last year, I'd rather see him ask for it and us to be able to fund it.
What kind of ticket price, give me an idea of what I, can I have?
Fifty-five plus.
Because I think he's planning on sharing with the water department.
No, the golf course. It traveled between the water, golf course and street department. So having one of the one that can travel between the three departments, but.
So between those departments, it's just your that cost, okay.
And if they, if he doesn't want to buy skids here, then he needs to look into maybe a trailer because they're, they haven't been trailing, they're driving it.
I asked Brent, Brent.
Brent.
Those two, is that? The next one I have is the golf course. Jess had prepared with Ron and Brett. It showed what the current budget is, what the amount would be either no increase or increase, and then what the proposal was. It looks like the employees, which would be the full time, we appropriated last year $125,000, so that won't be a change. I did a small increase on the first time seasonal help, just a small increase of $5,000, so I'm proposing $8,000 of that line item. Park office supplies, we did a small increase to 6,500. Gasoline. They asked for a small increase because originally I had 15,000, but with recent spikes, I don't know. I mean, I know it's going to go down obviously, but I don't know whether it will end up. So I'm proposing, they said 725, but I just went on the, I have the 8,000. Cabin walls, we did increase, I went for $20,000 this year. So next year they're asking for a $7,000 increase to 27. Supplies in general. To me, park supplies covers this part and, I'm sorry. So this is a combination of what Brent purchases for the town park plus what he's purchased out of that big park. So I increased that to, they had 20,000, I think just as 15,000 for extra. Repair cars. There's more repair trucks in the projects, so we did increase that line item to 20,000. Car tires and tubes, that's usually for, you know, motors for parks themselves. So we increased that from 5,000 to 2,000 this year. Buildings, they improved those two buildings, they were supplies from those buildings, we kept that at 10,000 for extra. The canteen, that was one of my favorite. So that is food, beverage, beer, yeah, anything like that. So that is a new line item, $35,000. Park postage, they really didn't spend any on postage. Advertising, we keep that about the same, $5,000, I think they increased a little bit, not much. I threw in $10,000 last year for repair cars to put that that arbitrage cannot do themselves. So I generally refer this $10,000, based on motion breakdown, maybe have that fixed, I assume for children too. And then sales tax, I didn't pay that either this year. So I did, they have a request of 6,500, but I think since seasonally the golf course can run until fall, I bumped it up to $10,000. So those are total requests. It's about $350,000 for $100. An estimated revenue, one alone, $385,000. So then I added that equipment and tools request, they're asking for $30,000, I went ahead and added that as well. So that brings them up to $385,000. And then follow up. Those other projects, that might be followed more in, for repairs too. Variation projects, car path repairs. So I did not include this for a bit because we still have that line item for some of the facilities. Again, we have a couple of small tools and equipment requests, I think those will follow with the general small tools and equipment provision.
Makes sense.
That's just some of the. Any questions? One thing I forgot to mention, I think Brent wanted to put a line item in general for equipment, or I'm sorry, cemetery, cemetery. I told him he was asking for $2,000, I think that's applying. And so he was asking for the person, I think that's applying, I don't understand the information in general, or any of the obligations there, so it's a combination, so I think that'll just follow, I don't think it's necessarily great, we want it for that, as long as it stays around. If you guys want to add.
We've always had a line item for that, because we used to pay Mr. Baker and Mr. Donaway out of that, right? For repairs?
I don't know if we had a wire item. I don't know if it was a wire item, but it was a different.
Yeah.
Finally, I have a police department request, that's their sheet that can add by their standard preparations, or on the lease for every year.
No change.
No change, I accept it as an request.
Mike's here.
So there's those, emission, diesel payment, premium, post-security customers, supply, training, uniforms, and others. Their second page is their worldwide purchase request. They're requesting to update their laptops this year, I think the last time, their chief straight said that they, I take, I take persons that they're coming out of. So they, that total request is ten thousand dollars. Which I would suggest that council firms may be able to save. Body cameras, the video evidence storage, maintenance system, Edith sent me two quotes. I think that Edith did say, pool company, pool phone is half the price of Axon. And also a lot of storage, it doesn't have to be part of the house storage payment, hardware software providers, but the fact that they're covered, they need to be, and it's the same secure. Government, Axon, because we gave them play, it's going to be full cost of product. I thought that was what it's happening. That would be possible.
See, I mean, major differences between the two that we should be concerned about?
Axon, or the one we've been bothering with, so it's maybe put out, Paul, I believe it works pretty well, so they have storage, it's not going to have a cloud fee, Axon's going to have, but it does have fees, also, these are both good for five years, you gotta pay, when you see, you can pay that for Axon, you got that five-year payment, you can see all their ways to make that call. With pool hall, and they're five years, you can pay that for the drive, so after that you already have license with these, and they're only have fees for the backup software that they have, in case something doesn't happen, it's a cost. And it was ordered, it was really, I would best, you know, pool, or pool hall, purely after five, you can take three thousand. With Axon, they did get Axon, but that was, but it would be, probably close to that five, six, or anything, really. Both seem like they're, they're a little bit odd for some reason. And not one over, it's just going to be the body, which is opposed to your purpose server, that's going to go over a couple of times, it could be accessed by all officers, it'll be issued with videos, or what have you, system, or this, and this coverage, and for the, and all this, all the, so, both seem to provide that. One is cheaper, one doesn't, I think, totally agree on that.
I talked to Chris Herkamp, and he said that he may have some, he would like to see body cams or dash cams in our budget this year. He said that they may have some funds available through the foster years funds, that we could allocate towards that, I mean, not enough to cover it all, but maybe, that's a little budget for it, out of public safety, then make a request for Chris to do that. Do you know when you're planning on having the K-9 in rotation? Because he did say, whatever we do with the K-9, he would want a dash cam on that, in addition to the body cam.
What were you considering now, if you were going to move the K-9 out of that action?
What was it?
You were looking to allow a little raising, early enough money for that, while that was taking consideration for all, about the way that action.
Okay.
Did Crossfire have a suggestion, was it going to use, was he recommending, or is it?
More of the dash cam is.
No, as far as the line cameras?
I don't know if the account is any suggestion, I know that the account uses, you're going to look at the same device they used for washboard, system, it's inside the vehicle, it's all , so it's.
Oh, okay.
So that would be maybe more, now that they're thirty plus, price is probably going to be pretty close, maybe towards maybe Axon price, maybe those could be five, seven thousand, somewhere around there, the last budget.
Do you, do you prefer the dash cams or the body cams?
I'd say body cameras would be, in high-end, better way, I'd go with the house, if you were inside, so that it's, they're both for regular, real traffic control, obviously, the mountain camera, the calls, they capture a lot of traffic violations, and during, body camera, I consider the lower, because it's on a chest, and they have a steering column. They both have their benefits, and you know, those have the optional, I mean, quite a lot of pricing there. I would say body cameras are more faulting, if you're going inside houses, if you're on foot, if you have a vehicle that handles, rather than, if you're being, the camera can point to the right or the left, that's how important the vehicle, if you go inside or out left, by the end of the day.
Now, in the body cams, you do have to turn them on, is that correct? You mainly have to turn them on?
Yeah.
And we should have SFPs in place, because we had body cams before.
Yeah.
We do. Are they not being used, the old ones, or are they out of date, or what?
All of them, basically, I think we got those, those were still there, I'd say they're all completed shot. The life expectancy for a body cam is probably three to five years, because it's not controlled at all, those are probably.
Yeah, we should have been told when they were out of date, so we could have done something to replace them.
Right, I can't figure that, actually, opposition.
Yeah, I know.
All right, and then the additional vehicle, what's, so?
So, what can be, the vehicle that's going to be used as a car, so, if you got, you know, or you got nine, full-time positions, you got nine vehicles, if somebody has something, some repairs go, or if you got a recall, that vehicle can be down for two weeks. Most people with that take are more programe, or most departments with that take are more programe, but have a vehicle, it allows a vehicle strategically, kind of, you know, if we're going to have, just another pair is done, you all have certain, you can pull the vehicle while it moves out, you see, from a, from a day-to-day operation, or having issue, day-to-day operations.
Do you have, you know, we do have a safety program, we did before, like, used versus a new price?
Basically, put it, or something that's going to be around, like, five hundred thirty thousand, and then our typical cost of fully operating vehicles, seem to have been, have been fifty thousand, right, and, that's including the cost of installation, and cost of the equipment. There's also another, ten thousand, trying to get, three vehicles to be purchased, or four, four, quick, because.
Gina, the one-time purposes, I mean, you took the work, Terry, on this ahead of time, on public safety, are those in line, or have they done the past?
We have approaches, I don't think, unless they say, I don't know, I just have those here, asking, usually has a plan, but we will only buy them two at a time, but years in between, twenty sixteen and twenty twenty, but no, everyone has a plan, it's been determined by us, so.
Is the plan to rotate those out, and then buy one a year, then rotate one out, or what's, so we do have a couple of old cars?
We can be, essentially, like, that trip, that style, get a new vehicle, whatever the year is, quicker, but again, I haven't, you know, put too much on, I have to play out, but when you get a new one, from now, you're one of the worst, not liable, if the price is not liable, you know, and it's always going to happen, it's enough for us, we're only competition for one.
So essentially, the vehicle you're asking for, is just like, if one of the vehicles goes down for a while, we have one, and then?
You have one, that also can be utilized. We have seen several occasions where there'd be a recall, and it could be recalled for two, three weeks.
I think that happened this past year, then.
Yeah.
And then the computers, we did try, like, brand last year, and we didn't get it for the, the ten computers, the laptops, right?
It was, uh.
Any thoughts, questions, thank you.
Thanks, for coming in.
Is there a plan to replace, though, Terry gets working on that, taking application yet?
Not so, they don't have a way, to be guys, your, in your future, and see what your talks all over, and how you, you know, more to talk about, it's a chance, a lot of, for you.
I definitely, I mean, you're down three officers currently, so.
Fairly.
Yeah, I mean, if there's, there's projects out there that we can, of ordinance enforcement, stuff like that, like, not traffic, but meters and stuff, that seems to be low priority, if you're down three officers, to me, but if you have a plan in place over the next couple of weeks, probably you'll be good to, to present it, so we can get an idea of how we can inform at least one of the officers.
Thank you.
Gina, I mean, I think I would like to build as much in as possible, depending on what is feasible, so as you're working with that, with DLGF, if there's, if there's ways to get it in there, great, if not, then I can see the lease car being the first one to go out, body cameras, in my opinion, is number one, if you have a five-year lease offer, five-year payment option on that, that's where I'd like to see this go, but I think it's definitely important to get the body cams in this year, more so than the ways to have.
Axon, those are, yes, there you go, and then Axon, I think you're going to put the laptops in, maybe ten? Maybe, yes, ten.
I would, she's saying, is it, is it the secretary, or is he wanting one for each car, as the extra car?
It's, he's wanting one for every car.
I think that's my vibes.
You could, you could do nine.
Because wouldn't they take a lot of stuff out of the car?
They could, yeah, if it's getting serviced, they take their personal stuff out.
Well, I think that, that if we do the rest of our, like, the Axon body cam, maybe this, I don't know, I'll see, and, and I did not, I did not put in the three thousand or ten.
The vehicle, the additional vehicle, they have, they have what they need to operate, so if there's, if that's a request we have to cut out, and you know that, I would say, number of reporters would be the body cameras, laptops, patrol vehicle, vehicle, about the same.
Well, so, I guess.
Where is the, the fund area?
Some, I don't know, say, a little different.
What's the fund balance for meters?
There is one.
All right. Because you could, you could fund the additional put out of those.
Well, we did that transfer last year for the third year of the year.
Right, so.
Or we could, do this in the next year, the year, see where.
I think that makes sense, too, do this the next year, or this year.
Yeah.
Right now, they have three extra cars. Main Street, they're requesting forty-five thousand, forty-four thousand five hundred fifty dollars of their total budget of one hundred and thirty-five thousand. Luckily, a third of their, their costs, this is in addition to, as Kathy mentioned, this is in addition to their infiniation of the building.
Do we pay utilities for that building also? We pay utilities?
I don't think, we don't pay their internet recovery, because, like, the.
I'm sure it is. I'm sure about that, for my last, last name, my son.
And you. I think the police department in that building, they, you know, the same water meter, but two separate electric generators, I can't remember why.
I almost thought we paid their internet, too, because I thought they.
No, I think we decided against that. They paid them.
Okay.
I think, yeah, I think we did decide against that.
Because I think it was, we got the idea of allowing that, to leave, the police department, by, um, less conservative.
Essentially, that plus funds an additional person for the town. I'm all for Main Street, and they brought, I mean, they brought grants to the town, and they're doing a good job, but a third of their budget is out of line from what other cities and towns, you have, you look beautiful in this, correct?
On page two, there it sounds, on the first page, there's cities, I guess, like, for Main Street.
I mean, Lawrenceburg is the biggest, I know that comes from Riverdale, I mean.
I think we can.
Rushville, which is larger than us, they pay fifteen hundred per year.
That's from the county?
That's from the city.
Oh, it's from the city.
Batesville does twenty-five thousand a year. Once again, they're larger than, we are no city.
So that's why I'm actually looking towns.
The yellow, with the yellow, the yellow towns.
Nashville gives a thousand, five thousand.
Yeah.
And then Oak gives ten thousand, just shy of ten thousand.
I wonder if they provide any other, like, in things, like we do, with the building, utilities, that type of thing.
I think, if I can connect to my email, I have that answer. I think there's at least one town that does the same thing, like, one of that pages, but I don't know what town it is.
Okay.
There is at least one town that does.
We need to turn down the plus, correct? Mostly because they give a hundred thousand as a match.
Yeah, we, I think it was, was it forty thousand? I can't remember, I want to say it was forty thousand, do you remember, Chuck? Do you remember how much Main Street group ass redevelopment for in that last week? Was it forty thousand?
I think it was forty.
Or was it, it was?
Thirty-five.
Yeah, it was thirty-five or forty, they asked.
I don't have a problem with, with putting a line item in, but forty-four thousand is kind of out of line, so, I mean, maybe we come up with a different figure, especially since we provide them with the building and utilities. I'm not sure what that number would be, but it seems a lot, like, a lot of money.
I know, but they asked us for forty, and then, we didn't, we didn't move on that, and I think they said, well, is there any amount?
Yeah.
I think they bought it, they bought it, second.
Do they charge their members, at their dues?
I think they do.
Yeah, they do, they have a membership. It's like a hundred dollars, it's not a lot. I mean, I think we could, we could have a line item, but I'm not sure.
I could ask some other towns, smaller size, what they, maybe.
Might put out the service, see what they say.
Were they a big, I'm sure, in us, maybe?
That's what I was thinking. We've been around, too, we've been.
Kathy and I were thinking, if we did a line item, it would be five to ten thousand, would be more in line with.
Do you want me to go with that, and then still reserve the line item?
Yeah, I would go ahead and put it in.
Seventy-five, between the middle. And really, I mean, by the time we off the infiniation, that's more like a fifteen thousand dollar line item towards Main Street, every year.
Yeah. I think that's fair, because we already provide the building, and they had to pay rent every month, you know.
I would, now, more, um, so, I have a show, Jared, who's over on Tuesday, he's in town, ancient America, he is with us as corporate staff until January, and then after that, he has to be basically contracted with the town. I love nothing for, there's not Jared, after January.
Is it three thousand a year?
It is, three thousand a year, and then the historic preservation commission members, who talked about possibly doing awards, I think, at the end of the year, too, so they can ask, you remember, can't be by chance, about to get a thousand dollars, and you not award for things, and then go Jared.
Like, awards to businesses, or awards for what?
Are they charging for, like, the CLI, or the CO, not CLI, sorry?
Yeah, yes.
Whatever, CLAs, they are charging for that, what are they charging, you know? Is it like a fifty dollar application, a hundred dollar application?
Twenty-five, maybe, that's, I don't, I don't know.
I don't remember what that's.
I don't know that they, I don't know, we came up with a sacrifice, I think he said, this is the reward charge, I'm not sure.
I don't think there's any reason not to retain Jared, especially in the first couple of years, most towns that have that, they lean on Indiana A. Marks, as the people that know those, those rules and regulations inside and out, so I think we absolutely should have it in there, and I'm also okay, the first year, I've been a thousand dollar awards for people getting side development, preservation, it's in line, we'll commit, preserve Main Street, bring them.
I think, I think Jared is excellent, so, yeah, I would be in favor of keeping him. I think he's going to be able to guide you through this whole process, and it's not going to be easy, so.
In fact, I've already gone right on for these services, so, I can follow up, I got three, I'm gonna say, eight, nine.
Great.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anything else, more members? Comments?
Well, I just want to say, you guys, we can't hear you, I mean, I can't hear you, this, I don't know if this gentleman can hear you anywhere, because this fan came on in, you guys aren't using my headphones, I've got a little bit, or, or, or.
Right here.
We just, uh, saw it, and we're seeing, but I, I really couldn't hear most of the conversation you guys had. You know, just a first, we, we just can't hear you.
The microphones are all, we let go, except one.
Um, I'm sorry?
All the microphones are on, mine was on and off, I'll put mine on.
Just letting you know, the whole, the whole purpose, the goal of hearing us, so we can hear you, and we just, you guys are talking loud.
Well, maybe if you guys set up in front, talk.
It's kind of a working lead at this point, the public care, we're actually, after we have the time, it's a budget, that we don't have the public care, well, so this was a working lead, but, I mean, I understand, I just, I think that's all the others are, it's, everyone was wrong.
The thermostat's upstairs in the front apartment.
I know, I'm just letting you know.
Maybe what we need to do, and here's my suggestion.
See, I can hear you perfectly right there.
Here's my suggestion, here's how I always talk, too. We pull these seats up, right out here in front of us, and we have two rows, and if you can't hear us in, well, we can't help it. So I'm sitting way back there, Randy back there, that's a big alarm, but.
Well, I couldn't, I couldn't hear you.
Well, he wasn't speaking into my, if you notice.
I tried to ask him, but no one really.
I know.
How to do that.
I, I had to do this, I picked it up.
I shouldn't have, I think he said.
Yeah, I could do it, and we hate that you guys are having trouble, too, I mean, that's those little speakers out there.
I sent you, I got you some.
I just think, bringing a good thing forward.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Kathy, make a motion to adjourn for a second?
Sure.
Sure, second, all right. Go ahead, let's motion, okay.